Yes, thank you.
Good evening and welcome. I will call to go to order the Yakima City Council's special meeting of July 24th, 2025. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Berg.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Byers.
Present.
DeCio.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Herrera.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
Thank you, council. Next on the agenda is public comment. We will allow 15 minutes for public comment this evening. If you wish to make public comment, please pick up a slip in the lobby, fill it up, give it to the city clerk. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and stadium which you live. Also, state law prohibits engineering, engineering.
Maybe that.
That's it. State law prohibits electioneering at city facilities during public comment. Speakers cannot campaign for or against candidates or support or oppose any ballot measure in the upcoming election. So first we have Dana Johnson.
Good evening, council. I'm Dana Johnson. I live in the city of Yakima. I want to, first of all, address a comment made by a member of the Budget Committee on KIT this morning, who suggested that voters are too stupid to understand the complexities of this budget issue in case, just in case anyone on this council happens to share her opinion. Many of the concerned people of our community are thoughtful, hardworking, and fully capable of understanding the issues we face. They just expect transparency, accountability, and responsible spending before being asked to give up more of their hard-earned money. Respecting voters means taking their concerns seriously, not insulting their intelligence. And can we talk about the elephant in the room? I know this is a sensitive topic, but people's, because people's livelihoods are involved, but in the city of Yakima, we have 92 positions with total compensation exceeding $200,000 and a few that are well over $300,000. The median, the median household income in the city of Yakima is approximately $60,000. I understand the challenges of unions and binding arbitration, but this is why our city is essentially going bankrupt. I have heard very little discussion about how to tackle that. I will be voting no on the proposed levy if moved forward tonight. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next is Tony Sandoval.
So does the clock start when I get here?
When I hit start.
Oh, don't start. Okay, I didn't mind just to kind of keep my point. I'm kind of throwing this at Roy. I think he's in Zoom land here. I would like to him to consider taking off, eliminating the legal department of $80,000 if you're hearing me, Ms. Councilman Roy. I think, again, Ms. Watkins has earned that position with no overtime. So, once it comes to a vote, or you have a chance to talk, Leo, Councilman Roy, please take that off. So, coming to overtime as far as the city, it's really out of control. I'm hoping that it's being addressed. But, and I just picked the fire department. It looks like 31 upper-ranked firefighters had overtime. And like 20 firefighters had overtime. One of them was like $100,000. That's a lot of money. I mean, that'll take me three years to make that, maybe four. So, that needs to get under control, because I think that's a lot what's hurting us along with other stuff. I, as an individual, is willing to step up and do what I can, and I am doing some stuff. Some of you know that. What we could do to get out of this mess we're in. But I need the help from all departments to kind of control their overtime. I also feel that others in our community are willing to help. I made contact with some. I've given the list to individuals on the city council, and I think they'll be able to come forward and they'll help us out from what we're doing, what's happening right now. So again, Councilman Roy, as a person I've known for a long time, I'm asking you to take off the legal assistant that's the front desk for Mrs. Watkins, who has played by the rules, no overtime. Since I have a little more time, tell me stop here. I gotta flip around to something else. With the water on the cemetery, I'm a country boy, grew up in the country, and I'm sure somebody out there could tell us how to properly make sure that the lines aren't clogged, to use irrigation water instead of domestic water to save the taxpayers' money.
Mr. Sandoval, your time is up. Thank you very much. Next is Gina Hernandez.
Evening, council. Gina Hernandez, I made a comment this morning on a radio station that somebody took as me accusing them of being stupid when I used the word uninformed, and I want to publicly apologize to them or anybody else who took it accordingly. My intention was to simply advocate that this council and your staff has made a tremendous effort to try to answer all those questions that are being bantered about now. The thoughts, the ideas, the questions that folks are putting forth, many of them have been asked and answered, and not everybody has a chance to attend all the meetings or whatever, but there were a number of opportunities. We might have gotten to just one, or we might actually look for those answers before spewing out our opinions was my only thought. Thank you very much. Appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Beeter, is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to address the council this evening?
No, Mayor Byers, there is not.
Thank you. Then move on to item three, which is our special meeting items. Item A is a council requested cut package discussion. Craig Warner, Finestor Director, Vicki Baker, City Manager are going to do this together. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm just gonna introduce a topic I think you already know, because we're just picking up where we left off with the cut package that you had put together. And so we incorporated some of the changes that you brought to the last meeting, and we had a couple to discuss that needed to be changed slightly that couldn't be implemented as they were listed. So Craig has some more information for us, and then we're gonna take, go through the list and see where we're at with the dollars we provided you. You know, we still have more options to get to the $3 million. And we also added a levy in there for $6.5 million if you wanted to go that direction, too, so we don't have to meet another week and do this some more. So if you can't get past the $2.5 together, you could do a levy for $6.5, if that makes sense. Okay, take it away, Craig.
All right.
Can I ask one question on that? On the $6.5? I mean, I, we just, we didn't direct staff to do that.
Right.
Just.
So Mike, my thought was, again, we don't have any more time, and so if you want to get to $3 million, you can do that tonight. And it's just another option. It was providing you the flexibility to do that. Again, you can completely ignore it if you want to. Just didn't want to have another meeting about it.
Good evening, Commissioner, or council members. Gosh, gotta get rid of that.
That's a dollar.
It's a dollar. Yep. What we've done is, we took the list, and if you go down through here, the nine point, the just over $9 million worth of reductions that we've shown all along. And then what we did was column O here, which is, we called a cut, and P, which is a funded. And we started off with the list that Assistant Mayor Brown provided last week, which was about $2,559,000, if I remember right. And we went through that list and.
Exactly.
Okay. And what we were looking at was, we used that to start with the cut and funded. So anything that was going to be part of that $2,559 is in this cut column. Anything that was not cut was going to the funded.
I know the idea was not to after印it out.
Yeah.
I cannot see that or read it.
Oh, Mike, can you make that bigger?
I can make it bigger.
He can make it bigger. Need bigger TVs, but that's a budget item.
Is that better? You still can't.
There we go. Is that better?
Somewhat. It's a worry. Either way, I can't know it that way.
I'll read it for you, Mayor, if you need.
We can get it a little bigger.
Better? Yeah?
I could see.
A little bit, a little more, a little more, a little more, tiny bit. I'm almost
there.
Okay.
Okay.
One line.
You can get rid of the one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, I can. And actually, I can probably move this over, because we all kind of know what we're talking about here. Just gotta get this to.
Okay, thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yep. So there's the cut, and then there's the funded. So, and funded meaning that it was part of the, of the $9 million. There's $2.55 million that was, that was part of the things that did not make the list in terms of what would be funded under a $6 million levy. So as you go down through there, I don't want to go through them all. I just want to go, kind of go through the things that we recommended changes on. There's not too many of those, but we also listened to council last, last week, or actually Tuesday, and actually tried to take notes and try to see what council was kind of agreeing to or maybe not, but, but we'll go through them. As we went down through here, the first ones that we changed, and I tried to highlight these in color, was one of the first recommendations that, that Vicki and I would make, would be looking at closing Franklin Park in advance. That was not, that was in the funded side. We moved it over to the cut. And part of that is because Franklin Pool, we've talked with Scott Schaefer, and ultimately, the pool is needing to be refurbished in 2027. It's going to, and there's really no capital funds to be able to do that. So the likelihood that this pool is going to live beyond 2026 without that major improvement is, is going to be a challenge. So we felt like changing and they're closing it one year early would be something for the, for council to consider. We also heard discussion about the Washington Fruit Center and the Harmon Center, and ultimately, we had put in, on the original list, $50,000 for each of those that we believe could come back with the use of fees. We can charge, we can charge fees at each one of those centers to be able to come back with this $50,000. Because again, remember, this isn't saying that we're gonna cut the $50,000. This is saying the general fund is not going to fund that $50,000 for each one of those programs. Okay?
It's not changing operations of those centers.
No. Correct. It's, it's just.
You hear that at home with the Harmon Center. Thank you.
Okay. The next one down that we changed was reducing the animal control and parking with the CSO officer. This was one where we moved it from the cut over to the funded. And this was one when we spoke with, with the police chief. He had an open position, and I'm gonna scroll down here. I don't want to lose you, but he had a corrections administration specialist that he had to open, that he would recommend that that would be the position that would be reduced, rather than that important position as well. So we moved that one and added that position down here. That's why it's in yellow, and it was, it was kind of a swap. Then also with the YPD, the crime analysts, there were two that were in the cut list for $300,000. We did split that out, so 150 went back over to the funded list, and that was because it would save a job. There's one vacancy, not two, and we felt like that would be an opportunity to move 150,000 over there. And then the other two, you'll go down here. If you remember, we had, we had $100,000 reduction to police and fires training. 50,000 at one strata, four and a half million, and if we had to get to 9 million, the full 100,000. I've moved those from the cut to the funded, because I believe that's what we heard from council on Tuesday. Okay? And then the last one, or actually, there's two more. The one in red was the interpreter services. So we looked through the budget, found where that is, and it's in the courts. And ultimately, that is something that is required by law for us to provide for people that are in our courts. And we looked to see if there was any other interpreter costs that were significant at all. This was the majority of it. So this was really the only place that you could make that cut. The other thing that I would let you know is that the courts are a separate branch of government, and I realize that the council sets their budget. But ultimately, they would be the ones that would decide where that, that money would be reduced, if that's what was going to happen. Okay? And then finally, there's a fire electronics technician position that's vacant, also in the fire department. This is a position that the chief basically believes that if we reduce that position, we could outsource that and that service to help us offset that 90,000, so we could put 90,000 into that cut list. So with all those changes, we started with $2,559,000, and we're at $2,540,000.
Look at you.
Yeah. So with all, that, those were the changes that we looked at. So ultimately, it was really about where does that other $460,000 come from? And ultimately, because this is extremely difficult, and we realize that, this is a difficult decision. We know that the opportunity for council to decide where you would take the other $460,000, and I'm sitting here with my mouse, because I'm ready to make changes, to be able to get to that number, or the other option, which would be to look at the, look at the revenue package, and instead of it being $6 million, 6.5 million. So that's the reason that that other resolution is there, just in case that's the option that the, that the council chooses to make. So.
Can we go back through the list?
Yes, absolutely. All the way to the top?
Yes, please.
So everything up here.
Yeah, that's all cut.
Was all cuts. The first thing that was not was the reduced street maintenance.
So I had that at 250, because that's what their slide said, but it's actually 500?
Actually, there was that, and then there was the 250 for the snow and ice removal, which is just below.
Oh, I'm sorry, street maintenance. Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay.
Got it. You're right.
So that was, that's the first thing that was on the funded list, basically. And then there was the reduced, the reduced clean cities. That was also in the funded. All of these are in the cut. And again, these were our recommendations. It's, it's obviously up to council to determine if you want to follow those or not. So I'm not sure where you want to.
I'm just trying to understand here, because I still aren't reading really clearly. It's okay.
Okay.
So we are reducing clean cities by?
No.
We are not. Okay.
No.
Clarification, when it's funded, okay.
The only place that clean cities would actually be reduced under this, at this point, was the graffiti removal, because that's under the clean city program.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if I remember correctly, that is, one person has been doing that work, and they would disperse that work, so it would still be done. It's just going to be slower.
It's gonna take longer.
Longer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Did you guys have ideas to make that other 470,000? I'm just trying to look through this list on a spreadsheet from here. It's, I can't see the whole thing, so it's.
I'm kind of clicking them down here.
Slowly, you're the Vanna White right now.
Yeah. The majority of them, as you can see, are down here in the, in the bottom piece.
On the parks maintenance, is, I mean, it, is the 380,000, is it just, is it all or nothing on that?
It, I believe the line item originally was 500, and then it was reduced to four, to 380. So that is less of a reduction than the original amount, but it, those are people, right?
Yes.
Those are positions.
Well, that was what it was on our packet on Tuesday. It was 380, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the crime analyst.
So we did some reductions for youth sports and for Crystal Park for the youth funds. Are those still in the cut package or not?
Let's see here. Let me go up here.
Yeah.
Let's see, there was the adult. Eliminate youth sports programs were, were on the reduction.
To eliminate?
To eliminate.
I have a, a chief just gave us a clarification, too. I, I didn't realize this, the third crime analyst, all three of those are full. There is not a vacant.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Position.
Okay.
Just a correction.
Okay.
Is there a total of four in that, or?
Three, sir.
Three?
Three.
Should we just move on and look at the other two budget options and see levy options and decide which one if we want to pursue? And then come back to this?
We have to come up with 3 million?
Yeah, we're at two, about 2.2 right now.
260, or?
You're at, right now, you're at 2,540. So you need about 460,000.
Going to the animal control and parking enforcement, there's the, I think it's 162,000 one. Not that one.
See, all of those are cut.
There was a second one.
Oh, this one right here?
Yeah. Is, so, just so I understand, the first one, that's 88,000, is a one person?
It's a community service officer.
Yes.
And then the second option is two people?
Correct.
Yes.
Well, at this point, I think I would move that we go ahead and adopt the changes that are there and instruct the staff to find another 400,000 to complete the 3 million. Did I say I moved to do that?
I heard that, yeah. Is there any other unfilled positions?
I need to wait until we have.
There wasn't a second, though.
We can get that.
Yes, thank you. The motion dies real quick. I have a second. Thank you.
Yeah, they're okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, because I'm trying to read my list, because it's a hard time. What have we had? To reduce the family community recreation, are we eliminating that altogether? The community recreation?
50,000, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We are eliminating that?
Yeah, that was, where was that up here?
Right there.
It was, there was the day camps, and there was also the 50,000 for the community recreation.
Thank you.
Did you find, is there other unfilled positions?
Yeah, I was looking. There was a fire position beyond the, the one that, that chief provided. There was corrections. There was four corrections officers, which we desperately need to fill those, because we're using overtime to fill them right now. There's an acting city engineer, which is, the funding is being used by the acting city engineer. So it's, it's technically unfunded, but, or unfilled, but there is somebody in the position. There is a 49% street inspector. There is the economic development assistant, which is part of the additional reductions here. And then there's the facility specialist, which is also here as well. So I think for the most part.
So going to the street inspector.
Yeah.
Who would that be? Scott? Is that you? No? Engineer? Bill? See around here? No. Is that something that can be absorbed into some other?
I don't know. I don't know.
It just seems like such a, like, you know, 46,000, it can move it somewhere. I don't know. That would get us to 350.
Bill's not here.
Bill, if you're at home.
I don't know the answer. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I move that we table this and continue on to the levy discussion, and then revisit it after the levy discussion. At that time, we would know whether we have to take 3 million off or not.
Motion dies. Will I go second?
I think we gotta figure out, guys.
I have the list.
I know. Can you put that list back up there, Mike?
Greg, you can just tell me without my trying to look it up here, because I can't see it. Did we reduce the equipment replacement, the 161,000?
161,000.
What, what's, what's the item?
Reduced equipment replacement. I think that was in, in the street program.
It's not on there. It doesn't look like.
I don't know.
Wait a minute.
I don't remember that being on there.
I didn't have that one.
I don't think so either.
I mean, I thought about that. I don't think it's on here.
What is it again?
It's actually part of that 500,000 for street maintenance.
Okay. So you just kind of put it all in together into one. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Okay.
So it's part, part of this five hundred.
I'm gonna look at the original list. Is there something that we added that you want to put back?
These won't have the updated numbers, but we really won't go to
Thank you. Yeah, there you go.
We, we printed them from the.
Okay.
But, but they won't have their obvious numbers updated.
Okay.
And those watching at home, this is how government works.
Leo, we're in a log jam. You better speak up and make a resolution so we can get off, get moving.
Is Leo on?
Yeah, I know. Trying to look at some numbers. I mean, we're trying to, trying to imagine it all right now.
He what?
I don't know.
He's having a hard time looking at the numbers.
Oh, is he on his phone trying to see this? Leo, are you on your phone?
I don't see nothing.
There he is.
Yeah, I'm on a remote location, I'm on my phone, so yes.
Okay, we can try, can we read some of this out so we can hear it?
And the original, and the changes we've made, please.
So um, do you want me to just read the, what's on here that is funded? Because ultimately, what we're talking about is looking for additional reductions?
Okay.
We don't need to go through the cuts again.
Okay.
So just what is funded?
What is funded? So um, there was five hundred thousand for reduced, there was reduced street maintenance uh, funding. There was, that five hundred thousand was not reduced. There was a hundred and eighty-five thousand for the clean city program. That was a, a part of a reduction. There was a hundred and sixty thousand for the YPD traffic unit.
That is a position?
That's an officer.
Yes.
So I don't, you, so the crime analysts, you had put in one to cut, one to fund.
The original is.
But they're both filled because it was.
There's actually three, yeah.
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 Similar to the community centers, how about um, ours operations for Lions Pool, so?
So re, a reduction there?
Yeah. Well, yeah, is that possible?
We could add that.
Since it's year round? I know, I saw that it does close. It's up for maintenance all August.
Maybe it could close for a month or two?
Well, it's already closed August, so.
I'm, I'm sure we could figure something out. We could add, like we're saying, maybe fifty thousand dollars in savings, either in fees or in hours, reduction, something. We could, we could add that.
Somebody add that in?
Yep. This is why it's a spreadsheet.
I like it on a spreadsheet. It's great. Wish we had a live spreadsheet.
Sorry about that part. Okay.
What does that get us down? We're three fifty now, whoo!
It's in there.
We're about four-ten.
Making progress.
So that pool runs eleven months out of the year. Five days a week.
I think so.
I think it's all the time.
If you want to close it.
It's higher maintenance because it's, it's all indoors.
Yeah.
Right.
Because we go there, we go on the weekends.
It's open on the weekends too. Even on Sunday?
Maybe, maybe that can be reduced.
Reduce the, either the hours that it's open?
Take the weekend off.
Weekends?
Yeah.
I don't know which, we could look at usage. Are you wanting to take more of a cut? If you don't know, keep.
I don't know.
I don't, I don't know what it would look like to go.
No.
Is it seven days a week open?
Do you know, Scott? Yes, it is.
Wow, crazy. The post office isn't even open like that.
Well, yeah, it'd be good to see how many people actually use it on those days.
It might be, we could look at attendance.
A lot of retired people use it. They don't care what day they go, you know, so.
Maybe go to six days.
You have thoughts?
Keep Sunday on.
Okay. We'll make it work.
I don't know what that looks like. Are the two centers open the same time, seven days a week as well?
Scott, do you know their program schedules for the centers?
What, what was that answer? I don't know.
I don't believe they're open Sundays. Because I, I drive by there a lot and they're usually closed on Sundays. I don't know about Saturdays though.
Are you talking about the fruit?
Harmon Center and the Fruit Center?
Are you one, if we could do more than fifty and reduce the days that they're operating, is that what?
Well, I was just wondering. I don't know, like the Fruit Center, it might, maybe you go to just Monday through Friday. I don't know.
Or the Harmon Center, Monday through Friday.
I'm not saying that, you can.
It's really no different though in terms of, um, at the Fruit Center, it's the seniors, you have the same kind of services and programs and the youth, so.
On the website, it says they're open eight AM to four PM.
What days?
For which one?
Harmon Center.
Eight AM to four PM?
Monday through Friday?
It doesn't say.
It's Monday through Friday, so it's already closed.
There's really nothing to cut there.
It'd be the same for the Fruit Center.
If we dropped funding for park maintenance down to two hundred thousand, what would that look like? Do we have a kind of an idea?
Oh, Saturday there.
Scott's gonna help us with that. I think these are
Oh, they do have.
mowing and weeds.
Yeah, it's hard to say what that's gonna look like, but it is people, so it's gonna be less mowing, less garbage pickup, less graffiti removal, so your parks aren't gonna look very good.
Is there a way to outsource that?
If you have the money, I guess you could.
Still cost, yeah. Unless we want to mow all the parks.
I volunteer.
So I, uh, Councilman Glenn just looked it up and Harmon Center and the Fruit Center are both open Sunday.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Was it said Saturday or Sunday?
Part, part-time on Sunday.
Oh.
Nine AM to three PM on Saturday.
On Saturday?
Because I know we do have rentals and stuff on the weekends, so.
And those are revenue.
So they're already closed Sunday?
They're already closed Sunday.
Craig, for the street maintenance funding or pass TBD?
Yes.
It's not on the screen, so I don't know. Um, if we pass that twenty dollar TBD, would that cover all of that five hundred thousand? Like, would it, can you explain that to me real quick?
Sure. The, the idea of that is if, if uh, you do increase the TBD fi, fees by twenty dollars, uh, council would have to basically create a maintenance uh, for main arterials. And that way we'd be eligible, and in this case, it would be for my traffic crew. Anytime they do any maintenance on the main arterials, such as striping, uh, marks, uh, upgrading the signals or whatever, I can offset the general fund with their uh, labor and their uh, equipment usage through the TBD funds. So it'd be, they'd have to spend a lot of time documenting, uh, it's just on the main arterials.
What do you guys think of that?
But you could go up to five hundred on that?
Um, I. It's an estimate, but um, it could be, I think we could get close.
It's not a bad idea.
So how do we do this then?
What about that thirty dollar protest permit?
We'll have millions of dollars with that.
We're talking about car tab fees, I'm just saying.
So that would put the tabs at forty dollars, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I move that we lock in the proposed cuts at two point five million and then consider the remaining four hundred or whatever it is at a later date if necessary.
Motion dice, will I give a second?
Yeah, I'd like to get us to, to the number.
Well, I think we're all at that now.
Yes.
What about the street maintenance? What, what will we do to fix, how would the numbers look with that then? If, if, I mean, how would we move that so that it's, that it works?
If we did the TBD increase?
Yeah.
How much would that be? That's the question?
Yes.
Twenty bucks.
I know, I know, but overall, like, would it be instead of the five hundred thou, I mean, how would that work?
It would bring in another, was it like one point seven or something?
Okay, well, that's enough to, to do this.
It would give one point two million and other stuff we can use.
Right.
Sidewalks, that's what I want.
Can TBD use for that? That's the question?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it creates a project list and you, you work through it.
I think that's what we should do.
Sarah's gonna.
Well, as you know, the only way to address the TBD is not at this meeting, since it's not on the agenda, but also there's a statutory, there's statutory requirements for hearings and things to amend your TBD, so um, you know.
It would take a while.
Yes.
But can you, you can, we can change the fee though without having to have all those?
I'm not sure. I mean, I think that there are different rules for the TBD that I am not prepared to discuss tonight, but we can provide you an outline of what that would look like as far as procedure for an upcoming meeting, but you can't decide anything about a TBD tonight anyway because it's not on your agenda and we're at a special meeting.
Yeah.
My thought on that event, just one closing thought on that, if I may, is um, I'm not really fond of that, however, to pay that extra just one time a year versus how much more they would pay over twelve months, uh, to get that same amount, maybe worth considering, so.
Yeah. What's your thoughts, Mr. Berg? You brought it up.
Twenty dollars extra a year is better than two hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Yeah.
That's my thoughts.
Simple math. And it is a fee. Anyways.
I move that we go ahead and adopt the four and a half million dollar budget that was proposed the other day in lieu of our inability to decide and we can adjust it down at a later time if, if it is of, an option.
You said four and a half?
Four hundred and fifty.
We had an option that we considered on Tuesday, the four and a half million dollar cut. I move that we accept that as our cut and then we can adjust it back up as circumstances allow as we go through.
That would mean officers and stuff, correct?
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, that's a lot. We're getting, we're hard, we're having a hard time getting to three.
So, motion dice, will I give a second?
I would move to do the reduce, reduce whatever, street funding, maintenance funding in, in lieu of potentially doing the TBD um, fee. Or I would like to, you guys, I'm not gonna make the motion for it, but would you guys like to do that?
Yeah.
What number is it on here?
It's.
Fourteen, thirteen.
Fourteen.
Okay.
The one you just said.
Yes, okay. Sorry.
So if we take out, I mean, that, that's a, it's kind of a gamble. But, yeah.
But it's already in the funded list.
What could you do?
Funded list.
He's, he's gonna bring it up because we were just asking about whether you want to do all of that or part of that.
That's what I'm wondering.
If you want to do other things.
You're right now at um, two million, five ninety and change, so you need about four hundred and ten. You wouldn't have to do the whole five hundred.
We could do, you know, four hundred, ten?
So.
Four hundred and ten?
The street, uh, the street, reducing street maintenance funding, I thought we had moved five hundred thousand dollars back into funded.
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were just talking about TBD stuff.
Yeah.
So you'd want to pull that five hundred over?
How much would you put it?
In the cut?
In the cut. But, well, you'd have to pull the whole amount.
Right, just the adjusted amount, four-ten.
Four-ten.
And then potentially add the TBD?
We would add the TBD.
At a later time? I wouldn't be opposed to that.
So did you make a motion or not?
No, I'm asking a question to you guys. Do you want to do that?
Yeah.
I don't think we need a motion. We just need to tell them what to do.
We just did it.
This is what it would look like?
Yeah, and we're there.
There we are.
And that is on a total amount of?
Four-ten.
So a, a total reduction of three million.
Okay, then we're there.
Exactly, in five hundred and eleven dollars.
I move that we accept the proposed cuts as illustrated.
I'll second that.
You're so feisty tonight.
We have a motion by Councilman Glenn and a second by Councilwoman DCO, is that correct? To accept the cut package that we have listed right now. Which is, we, we could actually just do that by discussion, but we'll do it by motion because Mr. Glenn made a motion, that's fine. So all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. So then we, we make a motion on a levy? Now I don't have that in front of me.
Is that, is? Scott, doing that, is that moving people out right now, this moment? Positions in that, reducing the street maintenance, is that like letting people go in that?
If we reduce the street maintenance, the five hundred thousand?
The four-ten that we just put in?
Yeah, that'd be three positions that are, three vacancies that are gonna go, that I believe are already.
But would start in January of twenty twenty-six in terms of the budget rather than right now? Is that correct?
I don't know. I don't have those positions filled right now.
Well, they're not filled right?
I have three that are unfilled. Yeah, I desperately need them, but if they're gone, they're gone, so.
Okay, good.
Uh, that wasn't part of, because the TBD was focusing on the traffic division as far as offsetting the general fund because the street division is using the charter funds to do projects, uh, to offset the general fund, so it wouldn't be both. Uh, because TBD, you got to be very specific about projects. It's not about people or anything, it's about projects. So that's why when we, if we do this for traffic, they're out there upgrading traffic signals, doing side maintenance lines and stuff. That's maintenance, that's the labor and the equipment to be used, that's it.
And the striping the streets, that's, how often do we do that? It's every?
Twice a year.
Once a year?
Twice.
Twice.
And this would only be on the main arterials, is how we can justify maintenance using TBD.
So it still just removes the, those positions altogether regardless?
Those, yeah, that, that's a total separate subject, so.
So no one is going to lose their job because of this? I mean.
If you'd reduce that, at this point, no, it's just vacancies right now.
Well, we just voted it's.
Well, I go ahead and move that we accept the six million dollar levy request as proposed and put together by the staff.
We called him earlier, the, Rick.
Yeah, oh, that was the one, right?
That's old.
So, the motion, as I understand it, you could amend, it's going to be to, to ask staff to bring back a resolution.
No, it's in your packet.
It's in our packets? We can vote on, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have it.
So what did you say?
He wants to approve the motion to.
The six million dollar levy request.
I will second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Glenn and a second by Councilwoman DCO to um, accept the six million dollar levy package. Resolution.
That's the fifty cent per thousand, correct?
Yes.
Fifty-five.
Any discussion before I have the clerk read the resolution?
Six million fifty.
Just to clarify, there were two in there. One was just an emergency hatch in case you guys got stuck. But you didn't.
At this point, if anybody wanted to raise it to six and a half, then they would have to move, they could move to amend my, my proposal.
No, they would have to reject your proposal and like a new one to, to move it to six.
Okay, so we just vote on this one?
We have the motion on the floor, we have a second, we're open for discussion. Is there any discussion? If not, then Clark, would you read the resolution, please?
This is a resolution providing for the submission to qualified electors of the city of Yakima at an election to be held on November fourth, twenty twenty-five of a proposition authorizing the city to lift the levy lim, levy limit established in RCW eight four point five five point zero one zero in order to provide funds to pay costs of city operations and services, including public safety, parks and recreation, streets and related services, and providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you. We will need a roll call vote, please.
Brown?
No.
Byers?
Yes.
DCO?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
No.
Berg?
No.
Alright, thank you. So the motion passes four to three, resolution will be adopted. Thank you, council, for all of your work. Um, I do have a statement. I do have a statement to read. Washington state law allows the council to appoint up to three members each to for and against committee regarding the ballot measure. The council intends to make committee appointments at its August 4 regular meeting. Committee members must live within the city boundaries of Yakima. The committees will be responsible for writing and submitting statements regarding the ballot measure, which will appear in the official voter's pamphlet. Tomorrow, the city will post information across its various communication platforms about how Yakima committee members can apply to serve on either the against committee or the for committee.
Is that it?
That's it.
That's all we got?
That's all we have.
All right. Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn to our next regular meeting, not next week, but August 4, Monday, August 4, here at 5:30 PM here in City Hall.
Second.
Monday, August 4?
It's Monday because election day.
Because it's nationalized now. So we have, a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown, and a second by Councilwoman Herrera, to adjourn to the next regular city council meeting on Monday, August 4, 2025, at 5:30 PM here at City Hall. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Then we are adjourned, thank you.